Terry, are we ready?
Please join me in the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason, just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
So do we have any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda?
Well, I was gonna pull item D from the consent calendar.
We'll get to that.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna pull item C.
Yeah, you want those now, Madam Mayor, or you wanna wait?
No.
And I would like to pull item E.
Yeah, well, I wanted to pull A, C, and D, so maybe we just sort of forget the consent calendar.
Well, let's just move adoption. I'm motioning to move adoption.
Yeah, right. Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that brings us to...
Do you wanna do a report out, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, it would. We have had a closed session both on Thursday, November 12th, and tonight. And report out, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, November 12th, the ad hoc committee met with real property negotiators and gave instruction to the real property negotiator. Earlier this evening, the full council met with the labor negotiator and gave instructions to the labor negotiator.
Thank you. And that brings us to oral communications, number one. And I have no slips from the public wanting to speak on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to introductions and presentations. And that brings us to item A, which is a proclamation recognizing Paul Bouschel as Volunteer of the Year. And I would like to invite Paul to come on up here so that we can thank him and read his proclamation. So Paul, whereas being a board member of San Bruno Mountain Watch and a Brisbane resident, whereas Paul goes out of his way to advocate for the protection of the mountain, but more importantly builds lasting relationships with people through his passion for the preservation of this rare open space, and whereas he enjoys being part of something bigger than himself, he derives energy from this and his enthusiasm motivates himself and others. And whereas he is known for his passion for helping others and the environment, and whereas he volunteers at Lippman Middle School's after-school program, Club Lippman, helping weekly lead mountain club members up the mountain on trails to the frog habitat and often taking them to the community park to share in fresh produce and recreation. And now therefore be it resolved that after many years of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to you, Paul Bouschel, for his tireless spirit, great energy, and passion for serving others. Many congratulations to Paul Bouschel on being named Volunteer of the Year for 2015.
All right.
And thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Can we extend the meeting?
At the podium, please.
For you? Sure.
So, thank you. I'm honored. And I can only say that this only happens because there's a lot of people that encourage me through their efforts and their promotion of me to be part of these projects that I've worked on. So I'm grateful. And I will continue to serve the community. And I would like to thank everybody that made this possible. So, thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Could I s-
Of course.
Yeah, Paul, you know, I'd like to especially thank you, you know, just, you know, I see you when you take kids on hikes and stuff like that and just see the enthusiasm that you have. And it's just who you are, you know, the way you feel about things. And it's educational for the kids, you know, and let you know that it doesn't go unnoticed, of course, you know. So I certainly appreciate just your passion for what you do as a person. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
And I think we all wanna say-
Robin, go ahead, Laura.
I just wanna echo Clark's words. When I first moved to town, you were the, one of the first people I met who took us up on the mountain. And your love of nature and of San Bruno Mountain is truly remarkable. And I remember watching that video of you that was produced by San Bruno Mountain Watch about restoring the frog pond habitat in Crocker Park. And, you know, I think, I speak for the whole community that we really appreciate all the work that you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I really wanna second all of that. And we have these, you know, annual awards and it almost seems as if, well, just in this last year or so. But we know that you've been doing it, just like Dan has been doing it, for decades. I mean, it's just not something you decided to do just this last year. You've been, you know, dedicating most of your adult life to helping other people and helping the community and educating people. And I see you leading those hikes. I also saw that video, you know, the frog habitat. It's such a wonderful video. And you spoke extremely well in there. And you were really incredibly articulate about what it meant and what it meant for nature and what it could mean for the whole broader habitat. And I'm saying, you know, this guy is really something special and we really greatly appreciate it. And it's really what makes Brisbane, you know, the place it is. If it weren't for people like you, it just wouldn't be the kind of unique community that it is. So, my thanks as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, and if I may add, Paul, you know, it's been great knowing you all these years. You've always stayed the same. You always have that, you know, you're young at heart. And you love sharing that with others. And you're an amazing role model. And I just hope you keep on doing what you're doing because what you do benefits so many people. And so it's an honor to be able to bestow this great award to you, being Volunteer of the Year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And one last thing before you run away.
We know, we know that you're usually active enough to stay warm, but, okay, this is why you can show off to all of the people.
All right.
They had me model it, Paul, for my-
Michael, so I can get a picture of you, Paul. Volunteer of the Year. Gonna put it on? Okay.
You're gonna do some more hikes.
Okay, okay, they had Cliff model.
That's the new style, I imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I see last year's Volunteer of the Year here, too.
Right.
Dan Sorentino.
Part of what makes Brisbane so special is all the community that gets involved. And it's one of the happier things we get to do up here. So, thank you all. And that brings us to item B, which is the introduction of Carolina Yun, the new financial services manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. It is reluctantly that we are going to see Betsy Cooper retire in the end of December. But I am very happy to say that we did a very successful recruitment to find a replacement for her. We hired Carolina Yun. And I had told her that she did not tell me what to say. I was going to make up a story that she would have to live with the rest of her life. So she immediately sent me something to, about her. She is a Bay Area native. She is a CPA with over 20 years in accounting and financial analytics. She has a background in pharmaceutical companies, biotech, and not-for-profit, along with local government. Most recently, she worked for the city of Millbrae. She has two teenagers, so we have to feel bad for her, going through that myself. She is an active member of the Millbrae community. She graduated with high honors from Golden Gate University. And she is a huge sports fan, and not only when the Giants have been good, but also when they were at Candlestick Park all those years. So she's not just a Johnny come lately for the Giants. She also follows volleyball. She speaks Spanish fluently, loves to travel, enjoys eating at restaurants, and eating, and listening to music. With that, I would like to introduce you to Carolina Yun. If you can maybe go to the podium and say hi to everybody. I promised I'd stick to the script so I wouldn't just make things up.
Thank you, Stuart. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It's truly an honor being here tonight and given the opportunity to serve this city, the citizens and the businesses of Brisbane. I'm very, very honored. Thank you so much. I'm also very fortunate to be working with a very highly regarded staff. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with them in supporting the many programs and services of the city. And I look forward to hopefully having the good fortune of meeting each of you and working with you as well, hopefully in the near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Certainly have a big pair of shoes to fill, not physically, but financially. Betsy, we're certainly gonna miss you when you leave, so, you know. But welcome aboard, Carolina.
Thank you. And then we have a presentation about Brisbane Town Hall.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm pleased to be able to share with you and those watching at home the new place on the city's website that's dedicated for participation in city discussions. And it's called Brisbane Town Hall. This has been a project that the econo, or, sorry, not the economic development, but the Public Information Subcommittee of Council Members Lou and Conway have been working on with us. And also recently, our web developer, CJ McDonald. You might recall last year of me talking about different platforms that cities have been trying to have engagement online with their citizens. One of them was Mind Mixer, which is now my sidewalk. And there was also Peak Democracy that we listened to demos and talked with their staff in the last year. What was surprising was when I met with the social media coordinator from South San Francisco, who advised that if you have the resources and means to build your own platform, to have engagement on your website, then he suggested that we try that. They were using Mind Mixer and didn't see quite the value, I guess, out of that platform as to what they were paying for it. So that is when I invited CJ to come and sit in on demos with me of Peak Democracy and Mind Mixer. And we looked at various modules and tools that were available on these platforms. And they are great and powerful. And the reporting background or backend of these platforms is what was very robust. But what you can do is if you have different, say, zip codes, you can look at how your different residents are engaging and the different ideas that come from different zip codes. That obviously is not the case in Brisbane. And so it didn't quite make sense to go forward with these platforms. So anyways, CJ and I, we met to work on the tools that we felt were necessary to have that engagement on our website. And he has spent the last four months or so building from scratch this new form. And over the weekend of right after Halloween, we had the website transferred to the new website that had, or a new server, rather, that had Brisbane Town Hall, which he had been building on the side. And were officially launched as of that week after Halloween. We saw some sign-ups occur. We publicized it via the Signboard and Channel 27. And there's been articles in the Star advertising that this is coming. There's a more in-depth article in the December Star that will be coming the very first of the month. And we just wanted to walk through the, well, CJ's gonna walk you through the, where it's located on our website so that we can have a conversation and demonstration on how to use it, how to register for an account. It was the decision on the Subcommittee's part to have first and last names be required upon sign-ups. Brisbane Town Hall is meant to replicate a public meeting, such as what we're in right now. And for those who can't make it to a weeknight evening meeting, that they would still have the opportunity to chime in on city discussions from home. And so therefore, that is one of the things that you'll see when you go to sign or register for an account. You can either register, as CJ is showing, maybe we should dim the lights a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, as Caroline said, we built in the option to either sign up through Facebook or independently, not requiring Facebook. And that's what I'm showing here.
Can you give us just a moment for our computers to catch up with you? Okay, I-
Oh, magic ends.
I think we're on now. Okay, thank you.
We see the overhead. Sherry, we're seeing... There we go.
Yeah, so the site, it's featured on the homepage. And we also have a section in the corner here that's called Brisbane Town Hall. And we have a few of the actual Town Hall topics in here. We introduce it here and describe what it is and allow people to connect up. They can view the topics. And they can sign up for them. Or you can, you can view the comments and the things that people are doing, what they're talking about.
Could you explain the difference between signing up via Facebook and signing up in some other way?
Sure. The site allows you to register simply on our website, to create an account, which allows you to post comments. And if you do that, then we know a bit more about the person in the sense that we ask for their first and last name and ask if they're a Brisbane resident. When they sign up through Facebook, it's quicker and simpler because they just press a button. They're already on Facebook, they log right in. And in that case, we get their avatar, their image, from Facebook, which is nice because it then posts alongside the actual Town Hall topics. But to get their email address, Facebook doesn't provide that. And we have to specifically get it from them, so we'd lose that connection. So there's advantages and disadvantages to both mechanisms. But the visitor to the site can choose either one.
Okay, great.
Or both.
Well, both is a little bit complicated, but yes, you can do both. You can, yes, in a way you can. You can sign up with an account and then transition up to Facebook into it. I haven't, I have to work a bit on making sure that all works smoothly, but in theory, that's the way it works, yeah. And likewise, you can create an account with Facebook and then add your email address, your first and last name, and check whether you're a Brisbane resident to that. So it's inherently flexible. The idea is to get the person to sign up one way or another at first. And so once you're signed up and you're logged in, you're able to view the, the, this is a sign-up here I created, which shows the avatar coming in from Facebook. And people can post comments. And we allow people to indicate their support for a given comment, as well as make their own comments, a little bit like how Facebook works, actually. And in this particular topic, we had these, this survey that was done for the Parkside Plan that is able to be done on the site itself, where they can, you know, basically vote for these things and then we collect the results for that. And we'll present that a little later on. And I think that's all the things we wanna talk about.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the three forum topics that we started Brisbane Town Hall with pertain to the Parkside at Brisbane Village precise plan, specifically three of the boards that were featured at the October 24th pop-up workshop. And if you went, you saw that there was one asking about a gateway element on Old County. And there was a board there that showed this exact spot on Old County where the bend is. And then below, there was a board that allowed people to fill in what they wish that that space was. And if you click on, CJ, if you click on the actual image, you'll be able to resize it to be high-res and navigate around and see exactly what was written on that day. And so the whole point is, if you didn't see something that you wanted that space to be, that you would have the opportunity to add it in the comments. And something that the other sites had at the bottom of each of their pages was who was listening. So we've also replicated this and just had who's listening, the city council, city manager, and the community development director. Someone else would be the consultant themselves, MIG. And I also wanted to point out that on the landing page for Brisbane Town Hall, we have added language on there to say that comments left on Brisbane Town Hall are considered public records and subject to disclosure under state law. We just want, we're gonna be treating this as if, again, people are coming to a regular public meeting.
And how will we be monitored and given results of this as a city council if they are to be taken with the same weight as if the people were here?
You mean how often will we receive the updates? And how will the information be conveyed to the council? I had the same question.
Yes. So are all of us now tied to the social media and given more weight to residents that don't have social media?
Yeah, in the past, I, when we had UserVoice, which was the previous platform that we used to get feedback online from residents in regards to the economic development workshop we had, specific to Crocker Park and downtown Brisbane and the Village Shopping Center, I had forwarded comments to the council on like a bi-weekly basis of everything that was submitted to UserVoice. And the same thing could happen because I receive, I and a number of staff receive comments that are submitted to the website, which, because this is integrated with our website, is treated in the same way. It comes to me as an email. And so those can be, that's why we felt comfortable to put that sentence in because it can be properly recorded and kept track of and disclosed if the public wanted to view any comments and for sharing purposes, too, for city council and staff as well. So that's, I guess, up to the council. If you want me to email it to you, I can. Or I can present on a regular basis.
If I could, Caroline, just to, I think, address the weight issue that you're talking about. Because this is more of a communication tool on a broad subject where coming to a meeting, we have a specific agenda where we're dealing with. This is just more of a communication tool that, you know, is kinda generalized, you know. It can be, somebody wants to make a comment on something that's on the meeting, but it may not get to us by that time unless we read it or whatever. So I wouldn't take this as a tool of how you're gonna communicate with the council on any given subject, you know, on the-
Right. And I, and I think that that makes it a little bit difficult if we say that a communication here is the same as coming to a meeting on a particular subject.
Well, I think it's more of an alternative means for someone who might not be able to come in person and talk. So, I mean, right now, we get communications from people in different ways. Some people come to meetings, some people send letters, some people send emails, some people do both. So, you know, how we digest that information just is already kind of built into the process. So this is just another mode. And I think it just opens up additional ways. And I don't, I mean, it doesn't sound like this staff is suggesting that we view it, give it any more weight necessarily.
Well, I'm getting an interested look from our deputy city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I think perhaps the confusion may be that the line that staff is referring to is simply saying that any document that is submitted on the Town Hall becomes a public record, which is subject to disclosure upon request as any document. So if you sent a letter to city staff or council and we had it, if a member of the public were to ask for a copy, unless there's some specific reason why it is not subject to disclosure, it would be disclosable. And that's also true with the comments that are made on this website. So that's the purpose of that line. In terms of the amount of weight that you give it, that's certainly within your discretion to give correspondence whatever weight you deem to be appropriate, whether the person is, you know, speaking before you at a council meeting or sends you a letter or an email or communicates with you in any other fashion. But that statement is merely saying, is alerting individuals to the fact that if they post something, it is disclosable and it's a public record.
Okay.
I think functionally, you can essentially treat it as if it's an email coming in. I mean, I think in terms of a purely functional matter, it's the same as somebody sending you an email.
So if someone, if it's the same as somebody sending an email, so every person who says, "I like that," or "good idea, bad idea," is that something we need to have a list before a meeting? That these people say it's a good idea, a bad idea, and it's a communication that we need to disclose at the end of our meeting that we've received a communication on whatever subject that is coming through here?
I think, I think I get where you're coming from, Terry. So if someone submits a letter, an email to us, then it shows up on our dais as well and that becomes part of the public record. And we state it as such. Here, this is, you know, it's constant. It's always-
It's not a wrinkle.
Yeah. And so, you know, do we need to have it then be in hard copy on our dais? I don't think so. I think it's a helpful tool, though, if we're discussing, say, Parkside and we wanna capture that data and have- and we want to capture that data and, and, and have it in one place for our deliberations. Yeah, I think that, that's a good, a good tool, but as far as taking it to that next level, I, I don't, I don't really see that really being necessary.
It may evolve to that one day, but I don't see it right now.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with Cliff. If it's, if it's on an issue that's before us at a council meeting, then yes, I, I would like to see it in hard copy, because, I mean, those emails can sometimes get lost, especially if we're getting them, you know, maybe days or weeks before the matter actually comes before the council. But at the same time, I wouldn't want every single post or comment to be printed out. You know, it doesn't seem a very environmentally friendly thing to do, to, to have it all in paper format, because we certainly get emails from people before meetings, and we don't have them all printed out unless we send them to the city clerk and then she prints them out. But, um, I, I think, yeah, it would be treated like an email. I had a question. What happens if, um, somebody makes a comment and they, i- is there an ability for anybody to delete it? Um, or not? Because I know, like, for example, on like the Facebook residents of Brisbane page, which, um, you know, I think part of the intent of this is to make sure that those comments or comments like those then actually get through to the council, that it's not this discussion in a vacuum. But I have seen comments on that page posted and then deleted, and, you know, they just ceased to exist. So what happens, it, does, can that happen here?
I think that there's a delete functionality, same as Facebook. Um, you can edit it and you can, and you can delete a comment that's, that's there.
Um, and then would it still be considered in the public record once it's deleted?
If it was issued in the first place, yes. I mean, you, you can't retract those kinds of things. It's, it's there, but it's removed from the site to be visible. Um, I'd have to look into the, how the mechanics work. It can get, basically, I guess, to answer your question, either's possible.
Okay, and are there any guidelines or rules, um, of codes of conduct about, you know, what kinds of information could be posted? And would the city be able to take anything down that's inappropriate?
Yeah, we have at the very, um, first sentence, sorry, if you can scroll up. We say that, um, the new Brisbane Town Hall area of the city's website will allow you to post and comment with an asterisk. And the asterisk at the bottom of the page says that, um, or before the bar, um, near the bottom of the page says that please treat everyone utilizing Brisbane Town Hall with proper decorum and respect. Staff is regularly monitoring postings to the forums and will remove any content misaligned with the city's social media policy that, um, refers to any vulgar or, um, definatory language that we have then the right to remove. But like CJ mentioned, it's not going to be not accessible anymore, because we have to have that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, um, this might be a question for the city attorney. Um, I'm assuming on our public media policy, the council would be exempt from posting comments on this forum, also as a violation of, possible violation of Brown Act?
Um, we, I would recommend that council not post on there. Um, if you have more than two council members posting, then you are going to be, um, um, having, you will end up with a, a possible Brown Act violation, um, because the content of essentially a quorum will be, um, submitted to the others. So I would, um, counsel, I would, um, advise the council members not to post. There's nothing to preclude the council members from reviewing what others have posted on the site.
Okay.
Can I clarify on that? So that's as to, as to this site, but, um, if, say, a council member wanted to post information on Facebook saying, "This meeting is happening, this is going to be discussed," just passing on information but not discussing the topic? Um, my understanding is like the sharing of information about future events or past events is, is allowable.
Um, perhaps we can have a conversation more, and more specifically, about the kind of information you're talking about. Um, I'm not, I'm not entirely clear on what you're talking about. And so, I think I don't want to steer you in the wrong direction without really understanding what you're talking about.
Because if, if this is something that is also, um, the public believes that they are communicating with the council, then it certainly would all be, um, information that we would be sharing information as a group outside of a meeting.
So, so a member of the public can post on here and all the council members can read it?
Um, well, it sounds like we must read it, if it's all being related as if it's being like at a meeting.
Well, it, it's not, it, it isn't a meeting. It isn't a meeting. It's, it's, um, it's like much of anything else. Um, however, it's a public record. Um, the Public Record Act requires the city to disclose, um, information requested by the public, unless there is some specific statutory reason why, um, the information is not disclosable. Um, and so, information posted on this comes in, and it comes in as an email. So much like any other email, if it is subject to disclosure, then if someone were to ask for it, we would need to disclose it. So that's really just a warning to the folks who may want to post that whatever they post on here is subject to disclosure, just like if you wrote a letter to the council members or to the city manager.
Okay. I would, um, probably like to get together with, with staff and, and really determine what weight these comments have as far as what are expectations of reading and being made aware of each individual comment, um, prior to meetings, so that we're, we're being representative to the public that their comments are just not being filtered, but that they're actually the same as being present, present at a meeting as, as discussed.
I, I have a, a comment question and some other things, too, but, um, the first comment is where you, their line is that things can be deleted that are misaligned with the social media policy. I think that needs to be explained a little bit more. Uh, I mean, you just did it orally, but I think it, it should be there in writing as well, because somebody could think, "Wow, what are they talking about? You know, misaligned? If you don't like what I'm saying, you can take it out?" You know, it's not what you're saying. What you're saying is that there's certain kinds of, of level of courtesy that needs to be, uh, met in a way in which, uh, comments are expressed. So I think that needs to be explained, because who knows what social media policy means? Uh, you know, we know, but the people out there might not know what it means.
Well, they can click on it and read the social media policy.
Yeah, well, they're not going to read the whole thing. So what they need is just a little, you know, explanation as to what that means. You know, what, what, what is deletable?
Yeah, there should be some examples on there, rather than just the link.
Yeah, yeah. It starts into that, but it doesn't go far enough.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the second thing is that in the previous, uh, format, um, you were actually responding when people actually asked questions. Uh, and this format doesn't seem to have any capacity for a response. In other words, it's a totally one-way, uh, system. There's no dialogue, or, or how's that going to work? And if there is going to be a response, you know, how is that organized? Who's going to monitor that? Uh, because I've said before that I, I felt that, you know, if we're going to have a response and then there ought to be some kind of role that, you know, that the council plays in evaluating or monitoring that, rather than having, you know, a single staff person, uh, do their response. And sometimes you're going to capture what we think, sometimes you won't, you know? So I'm a little bit concerned about that.
Right, right. Um, you're referring to the UserVoice platform, and when comments came in.
Right.
Um, I treat it very much as responding to comments left on posts on our website, where I work with the department heads and city manager to make sure that... I usually am just directing people to either go somewhere on the website for more information or to come to a meeting where it's going to be discussed of what they're referring to, if I know that's upcoming. Um, it's not so much of, you know, this is like what's happening, per se, but this is where you can get more information. And there is the possibility that, I mean, we don't have a lot of comments right now in our, uh, Brisbane Town Hall forum, but we do have a city of Brisbane account, which would be what staff would post with, uh, reply, if, if necessary. It's not, um, meant to be a one-way, but more so of a dialogue.
And so, I, I, I think we really ought to think a little bit more about that. Um, because if it's, uh, as, as, uh, the mayor was saying, if it's sort of put out there as, you know, this is the council listening, but the council isn't responding. I mean, there's a sort of a disconnect in the communication there. Uh, and I think we need to get some thought to, to how we deal with that.
But you can respond to the person making the comment, you just can't respond by posting.
Yeah, but you're not having a dialogue on the town hall. I mean, the whole point of a town hall is to have a dialogue, but this is set up, so at least the way I hear it now, that the dialogue is precluded unless we can think of a way to, to build that in. And so, what I'm hoping for and suggesting is that we think some about that. Um, because there may be ways to do that, for instance. I mean, we might want to say there are certain kinds of things that are appropriate for the council to respond to, or the council's, um, status or on a particular issue, or what they have resolved or decided, or what have you, from the way the council puts it, not necessarily the way the staff puts it, if it's going to be a communication for the council to watch. And so, then I thought all along, and this is up to the social media committee, so I'm sort of asking if you would be so kind as to sort of consider this, that one possibility is to say, okay, for certain kinds of comments, and you'd have to set up the criteria, it's appropriate for, let's say, the mayor to respond. Then you won't run into the Brown Act problem, because if anybody else starts responding, then we're in trouble. Uh, but if it's just one, you know, uh, person is designated, and that person is to represent the council's actions, or what the council is thinking on this such or other, you don't want to get into policy today. That's why you have to sort of be really clear as to what's appropriate and what isn't. Uh, but I think we need to give some, if we really want to make it a, a, a dialogue, uh, we need to, to sort of think about how we can do that, stay within the Brown Act, uh, have something that's representative of the council, that people don't feel is, uh, you know, misrepresents the views of the council, but also gives the sense to the public that, you know, somebody's listening and responding, because that's what a conversation is.
So to respond to your comments, um, it reminds me of times where we've received letters when, uh, from, from members of the community, and, um, maybe it's come like by email to all the council members. And I've seen, Ray, for example, you, rather than, you know, obviously, you can't respond to all by email because of the Brown Act, but you've printed out that email and, um, then written your own response and brought it to a council meeting, distributed it publicly at a council meeting. And so, you've gotten your response across, you know, within the Brown Act. Um, but it seems to me that if, if you, if you wanted to just respond to that person directly who's posting a comment, that there should be a mechanism for, for council members to be able to get that email address or some way of communicating electronically with the person making the comment, then you can at least respond to that person. And if you feel like it needs to be a public response, then it would have to be something that you would state at the next council meeting or publicly noticed meeting. Um, and I'd be interested to hear what, um, other cities like South San Francisco have done with Peak Democracy, um, or whatever the company that they use. If, if there were council members responding, um, my preference is to have it come through staff. I think that, um, they have, you know, the information at their fingertips about, you know, where to, where to point people in the right direction. And I, I would be a little more wary if it's, if it's, um, any of the council members, the mayor, or, you know, a representative of us responding. I think if it's, uh, just a request for information, I think that can come from staff. And if, and then all of us would see that response, and if we feel like we need to provide more information, we can then contact that person posting the comment directly. Not by posting, but by just, by electronically contacting.
As you said, if they, if they go, come in via Facebook, you're not even going to have an email address.
Well, do they register in?
No, not if they come in via Facebook, because I understand what you said.
Yeah, you can reply to them on the forum.
No, you can't, that's a problem.
No, no, it's publicly.
Yeah.
You can respond to that comment, because their name's there, but not, we don't, can't reply to them.
Yeah, but we, we, we can't.
We can't respond.
We can't.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
I just heard the lawyer say we can't do that.
Can you, you can message them on Facebook, I think.
Yeah.
City of Brisbane, but, you know, I, I guess we have a difference of opinion on that. I think it's, it should be representative of the council to respond, so that's my opinion.
Ray, I, I, I hear your concern, and so maybe what we'll do is have, uh, staff look at it and, and maybe come up with some parameters, and then we'll, the subcommittee will take a look at it and see if, uh, see if we can come up with something to kind of address that.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
It's a little slower, but I think that having a formulated response from the council is entirely appropriate within the forums. It may come weeks later, but that's okay. There's nothing inherently, you know, the nice thing with the internet is time discontinuity. It doesn't need to happen, a comment can appear weeks later. And then be a response from the city council. I, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I think it's good, too. Um, you may need another entity in the social media policy, or whatever the social media, um, committee would have to come up with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have staff work on something and kind of, and then kick it around with the subcommittee, and then see if we can craft something.
I, I think that what I would like is to see, for me personally, is to see, um, what our expectation of, of monitoring this is supposed to be as far as, you know, reading and, and the comments, how they're going to be forwarded or formatted for us. Um, I know I've spent, you know, an hour looking at one day's worth of residents of Face, Facebook, and you can spend an hour just trying to read the comments. And if that's the forum we're going to, that's going to require, if this is actually a forum that's used, and these are supposed to be, um, topics that are influencing our decision or city, staff's decision, then we're all going to be needing to, um, invest a lot of time on general comments. It's one thing if staff is responding to, um, "Where do I find a sandbag because it's raining?" And that's something that staff can respond to. But "What are you guys doing about XYZ?" is a whole different thing, that not just one member of the council, whether they be the mayor or not, is only one person's vote, so, or one person's idea. So I think that it's, it, it's going to need something that we're going to need to get together with staff and see how the interaction is expected for us to make it work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, you know, like I said earlier, I see it as more of an, another communication tool, but not the driver of your meetings, you know? It's not going to be the thing that, oh, we're going to spend an hour like we've spent the last thirty minutes talking about this, but, you know, um, as being the driver of what's going to be on the agenda. Because that's set differently. Uh, this is a different thing, this is a, you know, it's kind of like the, like an email, and, and I, I think it's just like, what Ray's probably trying to get to is, at, at some point, you know, there's going to be something on there that does need to be responded to by the council. How are we going to do that?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So these are all based on just a list of topics that have been city-approved? Not just general comments? They want to talk about how they're feeling that day, or the car that's parked blocking their driveway? Is that?
That's right. The actual topics are created ahead of time, they're not user.
So, so staff and, or the, the council is driving what you can even talk about on these?
Yes.
And if they're not topic-related, they would?
And that's a huge difference.
Be deleted.
You don't get, you can throttle it that way fairly effectively, whereas Facebook is way more open field and, you know, with a tremendous volume there as a result.
Right. So, if I may, Madam Mayor, so, um, you know, during the last election, there were, you know, some not very nice things that were said about others, you know, um, people being attacked. Uh, does that fall under the things that you cannot post? You know, someone could take something like Parkside and say, "Well, you know, this council member, blah, blah, blah," or whatever, I mean.
Um, if it's a personal attack on someone, I would say that it falls in, within the parameters of being removed.
Okay, all right.
That, that's a certain thing I think needs to be specified.
And then, Teresa, so, um, a couple of days ago, so Carolyn posted the, the Parkside, um, uh, on Nextdoor, and I replied. I said, you know, "I think this is a great tool, uh, to engage the community." And, um, and that was, that was my reply. You know, I, maybe I, I expanded a little bit more on that, but that was pretty much it in a nutshell. Is that something that is against the Brown Act?
So the, the difficulty is, is that if one member of council responds, the other, presumably, the other four members are going to read the response. And now you've communicated your view to
Excuse me.
four other members of council. So that's, that's where the problem comes in.
Okay, so, all right.
Um, so.
I think you're pretty clear about what we can and cannot do, and don't, do not hit the reply button is. I think you're pretty clear about what we can and cannot do, and don't, do not hit the reply button is what you're saying.
So, right, so what you could do, if a citizen posts something, assuming you can identify that person, there is nothing to preclude you, any one of you, or all, all five of you individually, from responding just to that person. The problem comes when you are responding and sharing your views with the other council members. If you're sharing with more than one other council member, that's when you run into difficulty under the Brown Act. So, my advice is that you not respond on here, and, and that you can't just designate one council member because you still end up with the same problem. But you can respond individually to that individual person because you were then not providing your response to the other council members.
Okay, and say, on the residents of Brisbane Facebook site, if I made that same comment on Facebook and said, for people to go to Nextdoor and, and check out the Parkside pop-up workshop that we did, and provide your comments, because we really want to hear from you, that's important to get that community engagement, that's okay to do.
So I think, I think it would probably be best, as I, as I said earlier, when you're talking about specifics, that perhaps, that I can understand the specifics better, and you and I can have a conversation about that. But generally speaking, that when you're using social media to respond, and the other council members have access to that, you risk then conveying your views about, you know, a city matter to more than one other council member.
Sure, you could have a council member say, you know, I really don't want people to respond to this.
It's possible.
And so, I mean, you know, I'm just saying.
It's conceivable, yeah, right.
So that could be another council member's opinion.
Right.
Which would be different than the one that I just gave, and so.
So the difficulty is when you're sharing your views with other council members, that's when you run into problems. It's never a problem to share with one other council member. But it, it does become problematic if you're sharing with more than one, unless you're doing so at, at the meeting, in which case, this is, this is where that sharing
What are you doing?
is supposed to happen under the Brown Act, yes.
So, so none of us can look at this until we come to the meeting, and then we can just all talk away?
No, you can, you can, no, 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 you can look at it.
I know, I'm teasing.
Okay.
She's kidding.
I'm sorry.
I have one other thing, may I?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, in terms of the topics, I, I would like to urge that we add another topic, and that is the Baylands. That is the biggest, most important thing going on now, and the hearings are going on. And this is something that people ought to be allowed to weigh in on. And it's, and the more we can hear from the public, the better. I mean, just like any other thing we're doing, I mean, it's important to get the public views. So I would like to request that.
And the library, the library, I'm sure will be on there once we approve of a contract.
Skate park.
Well, we've already done, actually, a similar thing for the skate park. That was.
Right.
Through Facebook.
The goal is to rotate topics every two to three weeks. That was the recommendation from all the demos we sat in, make sure it stays fresh, and people know that they can come and see new topics and weigh in, so.
Oh, so you can only do one topic at a time?
No, no, no.
Three are featured on the homepage. You can have lots of.
You can have as many as you want, it's just a matter of.
Okay.
You know, we want to have specific topics and make sure people see each one. So we'll probably have three or four at a time and keep rotating.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, you know, there are some really big ongoing topics that, that kind of, you know, they're not just temporary things. And there are temporary topics, of course, and that can rotate through. But there are some other things that are ongoing, for a while anyway, that should really be there so that people can, because it's happening continuously, like the two big planning processes are going on now, they're going on continuously. So, you know, as long as they are, then people should be able to comment on this.
And I just wanted to make a comment to thank CJ for working on this. I think it's great to have, to have the ability to do this in-house, and to have one of Brisbane's own working on it. And I, you know, I'm glad that we have the resources here and are using, you know, taking advantage of that, of his knowledge.
No, I really enjoy developing, working with the staff and the council, it's really, it's really quite satisfying.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm seeing people from the public that want to comment about this subject, and it's not really a public hearing about it, but if, if, perhaps if the council is good, we can have, maybe have one minute to make a, a comment about this, is that okay?
I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Okay, we'll start with Tom Hines.
Yeah.
Yes, come on up.
Yeah.
We want you on TV.
We'll, we'll try to do our best to answer your question, or at least get your concern.
Great, very short question. I, I want to know if the public will get to see everybody else's comments. Otherwise, it's not a town hall. If I can't read whatever other people are commenting, what they're saying, it's useless. Thank you.
Good question to ask, thank you.
You got to be by the mic, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, they will. If it's not defeating anyone or attacking anyone, they will be kept up. And as much as it is a dialogue, or meant to be dialogue with the city, we want those that are in the community and residents to be able to dialogue, too.
And actually, as CJ pointed out, there's a button on there where people can say, I support that comment. You know, or idea, you know.
But unlike Facebook, you can't, you're not blocked. Everything, it's open to everybody.
That's a good point.
We welcome anyone to sign up and start commenting.
But we know who they will be.
But Facebook has the ability to, apparently you can block certain people from viewing your posts. So if you sign up through Facebook, will that have any effect on?
It's just pulling your first and last name and your profile picture to the city's website.
So unless it, it's moderated, so unless it's pulled for, for content reasons, everyone would be able to see prior history and who likes it with a name, not just, it's got a hundred likes.
I don't know if you can see exactly, like, the names that have supported the comment. I think it just has a number next to it.
See, and I think that's dangerous. I think that if, if somebody's going to say, I like this, you should know who that should be. But again, that's something down the road. Thank you. Jamie, you.
Evolution.
Had a comment? Does somebody have a dog in a car barking?
That's why I want to speak and go.
Okay. Thank you.
He's not secure yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I just worry when I.
I understand, the windows are all open, that's why you hear him. Admiral Mayor and Councilman, I appreciate this discussion. If we were in an advertising class, we'd say, oh, isn't this sexy? That would be the word that we use for these kinds of things. And for 240 years of this country, I'm sure every generation has had something sexy. And so for me, I, I'll stick to what is a major theme in the way I think, and that is this. If it doesn't serve all the public, we're missing something. If it doesn't, we, we've had town hall meetings since the very beginning of this country, we've had them for a reason. There are people who won't be able to see this, that eliminates them, that's discriminatory, I believe. I think we have to be sure that everyone, if this is a public process, that, and I'm not sure of all the parameters, I'm still trying to understand it, that we need to make it available to everyone, that everybody could come and hear, everybody could come and see. If a disabled person can't get to the information, we'd pick them up and bring them to a town hall meeting here, or to a council meeting, I know the city would do that. If you didn't have the money to have the internet, you would be able to come to a town hall meeting, you'd be able to come to a council meeting. Staff are not elected representatives, and there, any way that they're managing any information concerns me. I appreciated Councilmember Conway's comments, I thought that they were spot on, that, you know, these are things you know want to take a close look at. So again, the issue of the disabled, and those who cannot afford to have a computer or pay for internet service, this eliminates them, that's a discriminatory process when you're talking about a public process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As far as I know, I think we have free internet access at the library, so anyone who doesn't have a computer can, can do that.
People that, people can't get to the library, it's not always open, and you can't always get access to the computer because they're not always available.
Yeah.
This is just a tool, though.
We can work on.
One of many tools to, to access, or to, to get the community engaged and get information.
And we were at the farmer's market the other day, and there was a couple there who had checked out a laptop and a MiFi from the library. So I think that's something that they're offering now. If you don't have the ability to get online at your home, you can check out a little MiFi device and a laptop, and you can take it home with you.
Yeah, I, I guess, maybe, Jamie, to, to your point, this is just a, a form of communication. When we call it town hall, it's, it's a semantical name, not a, not a town hall meeting. I mean, the meeting takes place live here, and we have a true town hall meeting. So maybe it's, you know, from your point, is like, well, maybe, maybe the name Town Hall is, is creating confusion there, you know, the misdirection, you know. There's something we'll, we'll think about, maybe what we want to call it, you know, if, if that, if that becomes problematic, so.
Yeah, you know, and the people that, that couldn't make the pop-up workshop able to go online and comment. So it's just providing additional opportunities that, you know, covering more people. I think you're doing a great job, thank you.
Yeah, we have also lunch, we can't hear you in the background, and I don't think you're on.
Oh, it's on, now let me just speak a little closer to this. So a lot of people were not able to attend the pop-up workshop, for whatever reason, it was Saturday morning. So this provides an additional opportunity for those who didn't participate to be able to participate. And, and even those who attended the pop-up workshop, who maybe went home and said, hey, you know what? I got another idea in my head, and I wish I would have wrote it down on that board. But now you can, you can go online and make that comment as well. So, just providing additional opportunities for the public to participate.
Right, that's right, so I guess the message to the community is, it's not too late. If you haven't had a chance to put in your comments on the, the Parkside plan, if you weren't able to make the pop-up, you still have an opportunity to do so. We have one other comment.
Okay, one more comment, and then we really do have to move on, or we're going to be in the same issue as last meeting, that we don't get our work done.
I know, I don't want to be responsible for you guys being here till 1:00 AM. So I, I'm fine with it as a venue, I'm not really caring what you call it, but I did have two thoughts. And one is, is if those comments are not going to be carried to council before meetings, why should I bother to comment on that forum? So, I mean, I kind of heard, that was just my one concern. If it, if it is a way to communicate with the city council, that should be very clear. If it's not, that should also be very clear. And then I just had a random thought about the, just the, what comments will be taken down. I think the issue is, if you say it'll be taken down but remain part of the public record, that would be clear. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to consent calendar, which everything has been removed.
I don't think everything has.
It was.
I think, was A and B removed?
Yes, everything, everything was removed from consent calendar. Thank you so much, both of you, for your hard work, and, and we'll work out the kinks in our mind, if not in the system.
But good direction.
Yes, thank you. So that brings us to item A, and I think, Ray, you pulled item A for the council.
No, not A, I want to talk about B, C, and D.
Okay, who pulled item A?
Maybe, maybe one item didn't get.
No, no, I, I just wanted to pull C.
Okay, well, then.
Move approval of item A.
Okay, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that brings us to B, and Ray, you wanted to pull that one.
Yeah, I just have a, kind of a request to the council that this particular set of minutes, which is about the special meeting we had on the survey, it, it seems to me that this is an opportunity to have minutes that have some substantive content to them, which it doesn't now. It just says, we had this meeting, and we talked about all these issues, but there, there's no facts and figures here. And so if anybody's coming back to look at this meeting, and they don't want to look at the whole tape, it seemed to me that the minutes ought to have a little bit more in them, and so.
To make them true minutes.
Yeah, make them true, a little bit more than, than what's in here now. It doesn't have to be a whole lot more, I don't want to repeat the whole staff report or anything. But I was thinking that there are a couple of things that, the very high response rate, we should say, you know, 25%. When there's 580, we should give the breakdown between mail and online. And then I was thinking there were, you know, a couple of really key questions. One is, what would residents like to see out in the Baylands? And there was, you know, 15, and maybe we can give the top five, or in percentages, you know, actually give figures. And then there was a question on, on housing, you know, 0, 43%. If it went up to 500, how many would approve that, 15%? You know, so, you know, that one graph? And maybe others have others. But I was thinking that at least those two, and at least the other information I gave, and, and maybe other council members want to weigh in on that. But it would seem to me that the minutes should have some real summary content of the survey.
Facts and figures.
Yeah, some facts and figures, yeah, rather than just, well, we talked about this and that and the other, but no facts and figures. And it doesn't seem to me that that's a very helpful set of minutes.
So you want to just have staff bring the minutes?
Yeah, oh, no, I wasn't thinking about doing it now.
Okay, all right, I'll second that, I'll second your motion.
Yeah, okay.
Would it be difficult just to include her slideshow?
That's going to be my suggestion, is to incorporate by reference the results of the survey.
Oh, that's another way.
Yeah, then you capture it all, then you're cherry picking certain things.
Yeah, that's why I said, you have different ideas, yeah, right.
So having some kind of hard copy with the minutes, I think, would be.
We've done that before.
So we have some, so we got some real data in front of us, yeah, right.
So if that's the motion, then I'll, I'll second. Alright.
All those there?
Aye.
So, so we're going to accept these minutes, but with data backed up to them? Is that correct? Or do we want to bring them back?
I could bring it back with a statement in there that, referencing the summary results that you all saw, that had the information that Ray just talked about, and were, and as an attachment.
Right, okay.
Would you like to see it, at least?
I don't think we need to see it, as long as we're going to include.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, the slideshow is different than the.
No, not the slideshow, but there was a summary that gave all of the, all of the.
Well, the slideshow, I mean, the summary doesn't mention all the stuff that, the slideshow is actually better. So that's why I was thinking that maybe you might want to sort of look at it and see what makes the most sense, and then bring it back.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so we're just sending this back for, for more information to be attached.
Right, and then we can sort of decide, or you can decide what you think really is the best way to communicate the data.
Right.
And then, thank you. And then item C to adopt Resolution 2015-45 to approve the grant of funds from the state coastal conservancy, and authorize execution of documents on behalf of the city of San Bruno Mountain. On behalf of the city for the San Bruno Mountain, Brisbane Acres Acquisition 5.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we have a purchase agreement with the owners of the Lot 79, and we've received a grant from the state coastal commission for $60,000, which is 75% of the purchase price. As a condition of the grant, we need to execute a grant agreement, which has certain contractual obligations that the city must adhere to in order to receive the grant funds.
Yeah, I had, Madam Mayor, I had a few questions I wanted to ask Fred. And Fred, good to see you.
Nice to see you, thank you.
Yeah, enjoying retirement, I assume, until we call you back.
Very much, thank you.
You've kind of had your hand in this for a while. Certainly, this is something that's really coming to fruition, looking at the map here, if we can explode it up there, Sherry. So, everybody can see it. So, there's always been concern, Fred, that requiring the open space, and, you know, I've heard it from numerous folks, that, well, it's not really permanent, you know, because there's nothing that says it's permanent. But the stuff that we've gotten from the grant funds and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, I don't know what the stipulations are, but I know in the staff report on the stuff that was matched with Coastal Conservancy, and that's all the acres that are in blue. Pretty blurry on this, but, yeah, there you go. And have your little key there. Do those have to be deed recorded?
Yes.
As permanent open space, right?
The parcels that were funded by grants from the coastal, oh, zoom it back in. It was perfect. The parcels that were funded by grants from the Coastal Conservancy are required to have a deed restriction. And, let's see, I can go over the outline of the conditions of the deed restriction. There's a number of terms that have to go in the use restrictions. One is that the property is being acquired for the purpose of open space, wildlife and habitat preservation, and no other use of the property inconsistent with those purposes is permitted. The second is mitigation. Without the written permission from the state, the property should not be used or allowed to be used for mitigation. In other words, to compensate for adverse changes to the environment elsewhere. So, the fact that this property is being preserved as open space can't be used to mitigate development on another site. So, one of the repercussions of that is that this property cannot be used as, to count towards the 40% conserved habitat requirement in the HCP.
Right.
Because that's a mitigation for development elsewhere on the mountain.
Right. How about the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service? Are there any?
Yeah, those parcels are also deed restricted. I haven't looked, it's been a long time since I've looked at the language of those deed restrictions, but they're deed restrictions to the same effect, and also restrictions in the grant agreements for those parcels that the city's contractually bound by as well, so.
And that's put on the title, where they have the deed, yeah, so.
Yes.
The only thing that's not is the stuff that the city purchased outright, right?
So, on this map, the parcels in blue, and the parcels, the parcels in dark green, the blue is the Coastal Conservancy-funded parcels, and the dark green is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service-funded parcels. And those parcels are all deed restricted. The yellow or the orange-colored parcels are ones that were bought with city general fund money, and so those are simply owned and fee titled by the city.
And then the one that's kind of between, I guess it's Lot 62 or whatever, that's where the water tank is, right? So, that's.
Right, that's the water tank site.
Okay.
And this little site here is also a water tank site. Some of these little small ones are, you know, are water tank sites. There's no water tank on it, but they're owned by the city.
So, in a sense, it's almost all the stuff, except for a couple parcels, is really almost locked through permanent open space, in a sense.
Right. The deed restriction for this one, especially the Coastal Conservancy one, says if any of the deed restrictions are violated, then the title to the property automatically reverts to the state.
Yeah. And I guess the point I'm getting to, that, you know, what folks worry about is that, you know, not this council, but, you know, subsequently, 20 years down the road, you know, you might get a council that wants to sell these city parcels to some developer or something like that. And I think there's a fear there that that could happen.
Right, right. Yeah, I understand that concern. One of the things that makes it, would probably make it more difficult for that to be accomplished, even if that were to be the desire of a future city council, is that it's surrounded by protected open space. It would be hard to grade in the utilities and the roads and everything else, and you would lack the economies of scale, really, to be able to make something happen on those parcels in that regard.
Most of them are landlocked, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Could I follow up on that?
Yeah, sure.
Same thing. It's been, a couple of members of the public have asked a question, and you can start off, but I suspect it's a legal question. And that is, you can see, there's quite a few that are orange or yellow, that are city-owned, that don't have that deed restriction. And the question is, could the city put that deed restriction in? And if it did, could it be permanent? Or could a future city council change a deed restriction, just that it could change anything else? And so, that's kind of the legal question that I've heard.
Yeah, I would defer to the city attorney, but I know this has come up before. My recollection of the discussion was that if this city council can't bind a future city council in that way.
Right.
These ones that are funded by the Coastal Conservancy, there's consideration involved, so they were able to mandate the restriction. But, you know, that's, I would defer to the city attorney for a definitive answer on that.
Off-the-cuff answer is exactly identical. I would, if council wants a closer look on that, we can do it. But the general rule is that the council can't bind a future council. And so, I don't think that's probably something you could do. But again, we can take a closer look, if you like.
I think it would be useful to have it definitively answered, because it keeps coming up.
When we met with the Open Space Ecology Committee, Ray and I, as our liaisons, about a week ago, that was one of the questions that they asked.
Same question came up.
Yeah, and, you know, and it might be, it might be worth us doing it, just so that future city councils understand what the intent was back then.
Well, maybe, yeah.
You know, it might be, you know, to create a large public outcry if some wildcat city council, you know, wanted to do something like that, and I don't know. That'd be something to kind of kick around.
It might be worth pursuing, yeah.
It also might be something that you could put it into, not just a deed restriction, but if the city were to sell the city parcels to a conservancy, or create a conservancy, then that could be something that wouldn't be subject to the, us binding another council. But again, that's something to look into. But I had one really quick question, and I'm really bad with colors, so I, one of the reddish colors, it says it's settlement, was the.
Orange.
Yeah, that was the.
Donation.
No, the Lot 47, which is this one, this was the one that was donated as a density transfer parcel for the, I think, the Sandy Ughort development.
I think it's 40.
No, I'm looking at one that says it's settlement.
And 42 was, oh, settlement, yeah, that's donation. Settlement is the one, was the Brookfield, I think it was Clean Water Action lawsuit settlement.
Okay.
And one of the terms of that settlement was that the Brookfield funded the.
Now I know, now what I, now I know what it is, and thank you for explaining, because I, thank you.
One of them was actually a donation, too, wasn't it? We just put that with city.
Well, the donation density transfer was the other one.
Yeah, this one here was donation density transfer. We did acquire, I think these two, they were, weren't exactly a donation, but they were a very below-market rate, I guess you would say, sale.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they sold them for what they were appraised for by the county, or something. It was like $5,000.
69 and 71 were, those are the first two that we got up in.
Right, and, yeah, these two that were bought from the county for delinquent taxes.
And then I, you had a question, and then I have one more comment to make.
Okay, so, in the conditions from the Coastal Conservancy, so number four says, the city shall post signs identifying the property and the source of funding for the acquisition. So, have we ever done, I don't recall ever seeing any signs out there?
Well, since most of these are way up on the slope of the mountain, and it didn't make any sense to post a sign on the property, what we've done is had a sign posted at the kiosk at the county park, in the saddle. And I think one time we posted a sign at the kiosk, at the Quarry Road Park, the entrance to Quarry Road. You know, somehow that got taken down and is no longer there. So, I guess this time.
Was the Coastal Conservancy happy with that? I mean, those locations?
Yeah, they approved those locations. They have to approve the sign plan.
Right.
That's one of the things in the, before they'll disperse the grant, they have to approve the signage plan, which we submitted that, and they accepted that. And they were willing to accept that again, but, you know, since it somehow, it's difficult to make something like that permanent, when you have different people putting things in those display panel kiosks kind of places. This time, the plan is to put a metal sign on a four-by-four post at the entrance, because this parcel is right along that trail that starts at the end of Paul Avenue.
Right.
So, there's a heavily-used pedestrian trail that traverses this property. So, it'd be a perfect place for you to have an informational sign that would be somewhat similar to this, but would have the Coastal Conservancy logo and show, highlight the Coastal Conservancy-funded parcels, show the trail on it, and kind of have like a "you are here" arrow that points to the location of the sign, and.
Good.
I think it would give a lot more information, and it would let people kind of know the extent of the efforts that the conservancy and the city have been undertaking in this area.
Yeah, you know, as you're describing that, you know, we're going to be putting together the master trail pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Right.
And that could be something that we put into the plan to get that type of signage funded, because that would be an excellent place to have.
Trailhead.
A trailhead signage there, for sure. And then the other thing is, you know, part of the deal is the eucalyptus removal. So, when do you foresee that happening?
Well, we're anticipating this will close hopefully around the end of this year, maybe early January, so then I'll start kind of putting the wheels in motion for that. We'd have to get some bids, get permit from the HCP plant operator for site activity permit, have to make sure this is not in the raptor nesting season, and, you know, a whole number of steps. So, I would anticipate it probably wouldn't take place until probably in the fall of.
Okay, so about, almost a year from now.
Yeah, probably about 10 months from now.
Okay, good. No, that's a good timetable.
Yeah, because I think probably in the spring, like March, April, I think the nesting season starts, and it goes through, I think, September, August, September, so, you know, you can do it during then, but you have to have a biologist go out there and look in all the trees, make sure there's no nests, and it's better just to avoid the nesting season.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Safer.
So, I have one question, and it's sort of on topic and sort of off. I understand, I heard that there was a parcel that's in this area. I want to say it was parcel 96 or 59, that was, is currently in escrow.
42.
For private sale?
42.
No.
I think, isn't it?
You're talking about private sale.
Oh, oh, in a private.
Private sale. Have you heard any of that?
96?
Yeah, it's right there in, sort of in the heart of what we've been trying to acquire.
Oh. Yeah.
Was the city notified, or do we?
We have, I've been in contact with the owner, it was several years ago, but he said he was definitely not interested in selling at this point.
Just one of the ones that one of our local realtors was handling?
If 96 has been on the market, I'm not aware of it at all.
Okay, I'll have to.
Three signs there, but I have no idea which.
I've, I'll have to get the information. It was supposedly in escrow, and so, I'll have to.
Like 89 was on the market, may have sold, and 91, I thought, was on the market, but.
Okay, I'll have to look at my information, because I don't want to be speculative on.
I know I saw some signs, like, right near the Alexander Road, where it comes off of Kings.
Okay. I heard it through, not a visual, so I'll have to look at my information on what that is, and hopefully, it's not one of our priority parcels. But thank you. Thank you so much for all this hard work. So, did you have more?
Yeah, I had two other things.
Okay.
While we're talking about parcels, and it's the one that Clark just mentioned, I think previously, we were getting close on 47, on Southeast Ridge, and then there were some kind of issues about the clearance of the deed, and then you said that seems to be working its way out. I'm just wondering where that is now.
I think you were referring to parcel 42, which is right here.
42.
Where?
On the right-hand side of your map.
Oh, okay, 42, 42, yeah, I see it.
I don't know.
Okay, yes. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, there's a problem with the title, there's a cloud on the title, there's some.
Still hasn't been resolved?
Hasn't been resolved yet. It may have to be some judicial proceeding that would have to take place in order to clear title, so it could be.
Who knows, huh?
Yeah.
But they're still interested, right?
Yeah, the sellers are still interested.
Okay.
They want to resolve this, they want to clear title.
Coastal Conservancy was interested, too, in that.
They were interested in funding. I can't say, you know, the funding could be reallocated at any time, it's not committed. It was just the staff had a preliminary recommendation.
It meets all their criteria, for sure.
Right, yeah. But I'm still, we're still following up on it. I'm still in contact with the sellers, you know, coordinating with them, and helping them communicate, and try to formulate a strategy to resolve the problem. But it's a complicated problem, probably best not discussed in this context here, but.
No, no, I understand. I just was wondering status.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now, another question, and this is kind of, comes out of my hearing, a testimony of Paul Bousgal. I hope you got this map, by the way, Paul. It's a really good map, shows you, you know, what parcels are, were bought by hand. And we've been dealing with this issue of permanent protection, which of course is a question that Mountain Watch has had for a while. But you mentioned, Paul, in your testimony, the concept of conservation easement. And it's my understanding, and this is why, again, it's a question for Fred and the attorney, that conservation easement is something you get over a private property, not something that you already own. But then maybe I got that all wrong. So, would a conservation easement help us any, or does that have any relevance at all on the question of permanent protection? First to you, and then to your attorney, I guess. No.
Is that?
You, yeah, Fred.
Sorry. My understanding of conservation easement is, say, on a privately-owned parcel of open space.
Right.
Mostly, it's parcels that are used for ranching, have some kind of agricultural use, that are at some threat for development at some point, and the landowner will sell a conservation easement to, you know, an agency or a nonprofit that will prevent them from developing or subdividing the property, but they can continue to use it for agricultural or open space purposes. You know, I'm not familiar with any instance where a public agency that already owns property would place a conservation easement on the property. It's a way of incentivizing landowners to maintain a property in an agricultural use, which maintains open space. They can extract sort of the development value out of the property through the conservation easement, but then continue the traditional use of the property. And so, that's very widely used in greenbelt areas such as West Marin and Sonoma County and the East Bay.
That was my understanding, too. Does that, you agree with that?
I think this is part of the bigger question that I would need to look in a little more deeply before I can give you a definitive one way or the other.
Okay, all right.
So, I will, that's, I've now added that to the.
Added it to the list, okay. All right.
List of questions.
Yeah, right. So, anyway, as usual, Fred, fantastic work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, if I could, Madam Mayor, Fred, I want to thank you for coming out of retirement and actually keeping up on this. You know, I know that you've had a passion for this ever since you were on the council. So, you know, it's got to be very gratifying for you to see the, how the map is filled up.
Yes, Clark, it is very gratifying to see this come to reality. It's, I think, been a longtime goal of the city, of mine, and the whole city, to see this area preserved. It's the scenic backdrop of our community, and I think it's going to make a big difference in the long-term history of the city. And also want to thank the city council for all their support in providing the funding and the staff time and the support to. and the staff time and the support to enable this to happen. There, I don't know of any other city in San Mateo County or the Bay Area that has devoted the resources to preserving open space within their community. It's just not something that most cities do, so express my appreciation for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Fred. When I served on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, I was really impressed as well that this was one of the tenants of the city and something that you felt passionate about. And, you know, I tell people when they come to Brisbane, you know, and they look up at the mountain, they say, you know, that's not undeveloped just because it's there, it's because the city has really, you know, put its heart behind it and found ways to purchase the parcels. And when you look at the map, you see that, that it took, it's taken a lot of effort to create this seamless amount of open space, so.
Madam Mayor, may I just tell a brief anecdote?
Sure.
Okay. So this really got started, Clark, when I think you called me on the phone in the office and said that you had heard from somebody resident-
John Burr.
John Burr.
Yeah, it's on lots seventy-one and sixty-nine.
That there were two lots that showed up on the county's list of properties being sold for back taxes.
What year was that?
It was in ninety-six.
Ninety, probably ninety-eight, I would think, maybe ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
Ninety-six, ninety-seven. Was it ninety-eight? Because we started the Open Space and Ecology Committee, we started to do that back then.
That was in ninety-eight, yeah.
Yeah, and it was right before, or we were just getting that started, to put in the ad hoc committee together, and then John called me up and-
Yeah, this predated the Open Space Plan.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it did, it did. It predated it, so I want to say ninety-seven.
It's what led to the Open Space Plan, right?
Right.
That part of it, that that reflects, you know, what parcels are-
Right.
-most in need.
And one of the benefits of the Open Space Plan was it identified this as a priority area, and then it helped us, having this, having a plan for open space here helped us with the granting agencies allowed us to submit this Open Space Plan and say this is part of an overall plan to protect this area. And so the first grant we got was from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, was for the Penna property-
Right, right.
Which you had a role in talking to John Penna and helping to persuade him to agree to sell those, sell those properties to the city.
Real estate broker in South City.
That's right.
Yeah.
And-
Yeah, who was the South City City Councilman.
So we got our first grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to purchase the Penna property, so it's been a team effort throughout.
Yeah, we paid eleven thousand for those first two, I remember, or something like that.
Yeah.
Back taxes. Anyway, yeah, it's, it's really satisfying to see this, it'd be great, you know, hopefully we're all around to see it filled. You know, I know it's a little bit tougher now as you get down to the wire, you know, some people are very reluctant about selling, and I think there's eight parcels there owned by one person over there off the, on the south side or the east side, southeast side of the mountain there.
You know-
Say on the right-hand side of the map, as we're looking at it.
Anyway, I think, I think there's still more opportunities left to be realized up here, so-
Yeah.
Right.
Hopefully fill this in.
Definitely.
At least this council, I think, will pursue that.
At our time.
That I, I-
I, if we're going to hold to tradition, we have one member of the public who is, wants to make a comment before we vote. Paul, do you want to come up?
Sure.
You're flagging me down.
I am. Paul Buschall, Brisbane resident. So I want to thank the deputy attorney for her stating that she's going to do her due diligence to further investigate before she responds to some of the things that were brought up tonight. I was also on the Open Space and Ecology Committee when we talked about, or when I brought up, the issue of legislative bodies changing their feeling, like the Chunky Bakery property, which was public property. You know, open space doesn't mean that it has habitat value, open space just means that it's public property. And we've seen public property in Brisbane sold and used for sometimes a public good, but it can be compromised. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service funds, the Coastal Conservancy funds, in their deed restrictions state that through legislative bodies, those properties could be used in a different fashion. One of my concerns, I stated the other night at the EIR, one of the sessions we had, was that there are still four parcels up there that are owned by the Water Department, Brisbane Water Department up in the Acres, could potentially be used as a site for a water storage tag. If not the Acres, it could be Ice House Hill or Levinson property. I'm really concerned about that. You know, just because things are put into open space doesn't mean they're permanent without a conservation easement. And conservation easement can be deeded to a public agency, public property, and they should be, and then transferred over to the county park system. There's no reason why the city of Brisbane needs to be holding property in valuable habitat. And back when I sat on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, we worked on very diligently, through Fred's guidance, to come up with ways of acquiring properties, and that was creating the debt, and council member Miller, and I mean, you guys were all, had a hand in it, Clark. To be able to save the most valuable habitat, a density transfer was created. You know, maybe the city could benefit from taking their land and doing a density transfer for affordable housing and some of the other density transfer sites that we've selected. But all these parcels that were purchased, whether it was public, well, even the Coastal Conservancy money was purchased with Brisbane's money as well for every one of these parcels. So I just want to make it known that, yes, they could be threatened, and you guys alluded to that, some future council could decide that they want to do something different, legislative body, they change their mind, they pay back the Coastal Conservancy money, they pay back the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service money, and that's in the deed restrictions, that's okay with them. So that's not okay with me personally, and, you know, why are we holding properties? Why don't we turn them over into the county, make a deed restriction on it that it's a conservation easement, and do what we should be doing with those properties and turn them over to the park system? Thank you.
I think that's all food for thought, it's not the item before us.
Right, I was just going to say that in terms of the list of things for the attorney to look into, I think, you know, we do have an Open Space Plan, which defines what we mean by open space, and it goes far beyond just public ownership. And the critical open space, I think, had eight or nine criteria, Fred. You know, in order to have parcels identified as a part of the critical open space with a high priority for acquisition, we had a metric, was it at least eight criteria, as I recall? Am I, but there was a bunch of quantitative criteria that had to be met.
There were metrics.
Yeah, there was this kind of matrix of different criteria that, such as, you know, not surrounded by developed parcels, within the scenic backdrop, within a watershed, things like that, containing-
Grasslands.
Grasslands and dangerous species habitat.
Right, right. So there's a whole bunch of criteria.
There's a whole bunch of criteria that allowed us to identify which parcels would be within.
You know, the critical-
The yellow line that's identified in the Open Space Plan as the priority preservation area.
Right, right.
And that was the whole point of the plan, was to focus our efforts within that high priority area.
Right. So if we're talking about, you know, permanent protection of something, at least from the point of view of current policy, I mean, that would be the high priority protection parcels.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move adoption of Resolution Number 2015-45 to approve the grant funds from the state Coastal Conservancy to authorize the execution of documents on behalf of the city for San Bruno Mountain, Brisbane Acres.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Yes, thank you. That brings us to Item D, which is Resolution 2015-46, to proclaim no traffic ahead, Brisbane taking a stand against human trafficking in the Bay Area before the 2016 Super Bowl and beyond.
Okay, so let me just give you what I'm concerned about, and then please respond. And then my apologies for pulling this, but I felt that there were two things that you should at least talk about. The first thing is the third resolve, you have that in front of you? And the third resolve seems to go a little bit beyond what we have control over. It says the city of Brisbane will ensure that the staff of the Brisbane Police Department, district attorney, sheriff, adult probation, juvenile probation, public defender, blah, 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 will participate in available human traffic training. I don't think we have any ability to ensure that anybody beyond our own police department can do that. So I would think that we want to certainly cooperate in that process, but there's no way we can ensure all those county agencies doing this particular training. So I just thought that went a little bit further than we can actually promise. And then, so if you agree with that, then maybe we can just sort of tweak the language a little, because I have no problem with this as a serious issue, and we should address it, but we shouldn't be making promises we can't fulfill. And then the other thing, which I found kind of interesting, and I just thought we could address that as well, it's all in connection to the Super Bowl, and yet the staff report says that there's no hard data that there actually is any necessary correlation between the Super Bowl and the increase in human trafficking, though even though people may believe that, there's no hard data to support that. So I was just kind of wondering where all this connection to the Super Bowl came from. So those are my two points.
Okay, okay. I'll just go over a little bit on kind of some points that in the staff report. So good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are asking council to adopt a resolution proclaiming that Brisbane will continue its stance against human trafficking in the Bay Area before the 2016 Super Bowl, which you know is being held in Santa Clara. We know that seventy thousand people will be attending the Super Bowl on February seventh, and another estimated one million will be traveling to the Bay Area during the week leading up to the Super Bowl. San Mateo County through Measure A funds created a human trafficking coordinator position. Our county through this coordinator is marketing this initiative that comes from the No Traffic Ahead Coalition out in the South Bay Area. The goal of this resolution is pretty simple, we want to partner with our Chamber of Commerce, we want to educate owners and employees of our local businesses about human trafficking, we want to encourage them to report suspicious activity on our people to law enforcement, and most importantly, we want to build the culture where human trafficking, human trafficking will not be tolerated. Our department has been actively conducting human trafficking training since 2010 to our officers and to our hotel staff and management. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce and recognize one of our officers, Officer Abraham Sevilla, and he is actually our human trafficking trainer, and he's been working diligently and making sure our officers are trained, and reaching out and working, making that partnership with our hotels, and making sure hotel staff and management are trained on things to look for and to working in partnership with the police department. Just in closure, I wanted also to bring our, the county, our county human trafficking coordinator is here, who'd like to also address and say some words, so maybe he can help me out with some of those questions. Staff recommends that city council adopt this resolution proclaiming no traffic ahead, and that Brisbane will take a stand against human trafficking in the Bay Area before the 2016 Super Bowl and beyond, along with other, many of the other cities that are currently already have adopted the resolution. So I will go ahead and bring up our county coordinator, Mike Brosnan, who will also say a few words, and then we'll go back to, to connect with some of those answers to those questions. Mike?
Gabe Mayor O'Connell, Mayor Pro Tem Lentz, honorable members of the Brisbane City Council. My name is Mike Brosnan, and after twenty-eight-plus proud years in, with the city of South San Francisco Police Department, I retired on July thirtieth and took on this role as San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program Coordinator assigned to the sheriff's office. I want to thank you for allowing me to address you tonight as a part of this resolution. I want to congratulate, and answer some of your questions, sir, I want to congratulate the city of Brisbane for joining the cities of Belmont, South San Francisco, San Carlos, San Mateo, Menlo Park, Half Moon Bay, Daly City, Pacifica, San Bruno, Redwood City, Burlingame, East Palo Alto, Milbre, and the County Board of Supervisors for taking a stand against human trafficking, the same resolution that's sixteen, or sorry, fifteen elected bodies in San Mateo County. This is a pre-Super Bowl resolution that highlights the positive relationships between the city of Brisbane and the Brisbane business community. We've partnered with your Chamber of Commerce to help raise awareness and to market training. I also want to thank Chief Lisa Macias and the rest of her team for their commitment to this effort. As she stated, Brisbane has been a part of the effort to combat human trafficking and to educate ourselves on what human trafficking actually does and how it impacts our neighborhoods since the beginning. Your proclamation also cites a national hotline, and the number for that hotline is one eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. It's an odd format, however, one much easier to remember, that's one eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. And as for training, every member of the San Mateo County Hotel and Hospitality Industry was invited to the South San Francisco Conference Center on Friday, November sixth, for a morning of instruction. Approximately one hundred and eighty people participated, and we counted fifty-eight different hotel properties. The city of Brisbane took the training very seriously, as we are joined by Police Commander Meisner, Sergeant Garcia, and Officer Sevilla. We are also joined by Mayor Pro Tem Lentz. Special thanks, Mayor Pro Tem, for the support. The hotel and hospitality professionals that training targeted could be our eyes and our ears for the future, our future reporting parties and witnesses. We are proud to provide them with the tools to recognize human trafficking and the confidence to report it. So once again, I want to thank you for your leadership and for allowing me to take part in tonight's council meeting. And I will answer any questions if I can.
How about the two I asked?
Okay, can you restate them, please, sir? Can you restate them, please?
So the first question is, could we just change the third resolve so we're not promising that we're going to ensure that the county agencies are going to do the training, there's no way we can ensure that. We can ensure that the Brisbane Police Department will do that, and will cooperate with anybody else, but there's no, we can ensure that all the county agencies can be the training. So it's just, it's just an overstatement, that's all.
Right, and I think that it was more of a collaborative, we're going to work with the, and make a collaborative effort to make sure that we-
Right.
-the city of Brisbane trains and make sure that all of these write collaboratively with all the other agencies.
Put it that way, then that's fine, that's what we should be doing.
I have some suggested language.
Oh, okay, go for it.
Say maybe the city of Brisbane directs the staff of the Brisbane Police Department and joins these other agencies in participating available human traffic training.
That's fine, that's fine.
Something like that.
Or you could just keep it as it is and say, after Brisbane Police Department, and we'll work collaboratively with-
Right.
-to make the distinction.
And that's fine. That's, it's the only distinction, yeah, and that way we're not promising something we obviously can't deliver on.
So we're not the lead agency.
Yeah, we're not the lead agency, yeah.
That's your point.
Well, we understood.
Yeah, okay. But then the other thing, just a curiosity question, why are we, why are we using the Super Bowl as kind of the key timing event, even though the staff report says that there's no data to show that there's any, you know, connection between the Super Bowl happening and the spike in human trafficking? So I'm just sort of curious as to why the Super Bowl was picked and picked up out as a, as sort of the signal for engaging in this activity.
So as the chief stated, it's seventy thousand in the park and estimated another million in the region during that eight or nine-day period of time. The sample size in terms of studying the, that one-day event and how it impacts many parts of crime is in progress, dating back, that I know of in terms of the human trafficking side, to the Meadowlands Super Bowl two years ago, last year in Phoenix. I've already been a part of the think tank that, not only for Santa Clara, but for Houston next year and for Minneapolis the following year. for Houston next year and for Minneapolis the following year. So, uh, the sample size is, is definitely going to get bigger, and, and there may be a, a definitive determination here in the very near future in terms of exactly what this one day does bring in terms of human trafficking. However, uh, any single, uh, event in, in this magnitude does include, um, the addition of the commercial sex industry, and that's what we're specifically targeting our awareness and our enforcement efforts.
Okay, no, I was, I was more of a curiosity question as to how the, the Super Bowl kind of got picked on, sort of. I mean, it could be, you know, conventions or oth- other kinds of things which bring in a lot of people. Uh, I mean, some of the conventions that happen in San Francisco actually have more than seventy thousand people, so there are probably a lot of, uh, events that bring a lot of people together that have a spike in human trafficking. And so that, that was my only, and I'm sure you're aware of that, so I'm, I'm just saying things that seem obvious.
Sir, and, and that's exactly why, sir, we, we talk more about the eighth of February next year than the seventh of February next year, because this is a, um, a, uh, a social issue, uh, that is, is going on now, and it's going to be going on in the future. Uh, we target specifically the hotel and hospitality with those types of other, uh, periphery issues in mind, like conventions. So they, they could see this behavior every single day, and it's our desire to train up every employee and, and, and to raise the awareness of every citizen so that when we see something, we say something.
Okay, thank you.
Look, do you have a question as well? So in the, the first whereas clause, um, it says that the city of Brisbane will use its best efforts to host events at hotels that have signed on to the code of conduct. Um, do we know, um, if the two hotels in Brisbane have signed that document?
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't. Uh, we will, uh, the plan is, I know that, um, I have planned a meeting, the same with, um, our Director of Officer Emergency Services, Randy Broun, in order to meet with, um, our Chamber of Commerce Director, in order to determine whether or not any events are planned in our hotels, and just to keep abreast and informed if anything is, um, is scheduled to be planned.
Okay, well, even if it's not, there's nothing planned, it's, this is a code of contact that is not related, I think, to the event specifically, but it sounds like something we could encourage the hotels to sign on to if they haven't already. Um, and I, and that one eight hundred number that you noticed before, I think when we had our massage ordinance, um, one of the comments that I had was that I, I asked that that number be, that, that reference to the, to the requirement to post the sign with that number, that it be included in the ordinance that we passed. So at least in the massage establishments in, in town, the one, um, that, that number is already posted.
It is posted. There is a sign there that, that has that number, yes, there is.
Right.
And there, if I can add, there's a, a supplementary statute, uh, eleven ninety-three that mandates that, that sort of business, uh, posts that, that sort of, uh, pervage.
Okay, right.
And if, in terms of the code, the, the code.org is, uh, if you could, you could go to that website and actually see, uh, what that nonprofit that's connected to No Traffic Ahead is all about, and, and it's, it's, uh, it's a, uh, a nonprofit that is directly linked to, uh, the child, um, exploitation with the tur- within the tourism industry.
Okay, okay.
Very good.
If I, so my Madam Mayor, um, Mike, I, I just want to thank you for not spending your retirement, uh, hanging out on some golf course, you know, that you, you know, continue to.
Well, you may do that, too.
You know, continue to, you know, to help others, and, um, you know, I can't imagine a better person to be taking on this position and, and dealing with this subject matter. Um, you know, it's a, it's, it's a brutal situation, it really is, and, and that forum that you coordinated and hosted, uh, you know, was, was very sobering, and having two daughters, uh, knowing that, you know, there's, there's predators out there. And luckily, our daughters have a good foundation, but there's so many kids that do not, and it isn't just girls, it's also boys, too. Um, and, you know, they're, they can easily fall victim to, to these people who manipulate them and, and, you know, they, they make huge amounts of money, and, and that's what drives it, it's this greed for money and, and, uh, lack of, of dignity and respect for other humans. And so, um, you know, it was great having Congressman Jackie Speer give her, um, uh, talk about it, but what was even more inspiring was there was that person who was, I, I think she was working for the Sandra Day O'Connor Institute.
Savannah Sanders is from the Sandra Day O'Connor?
Incredible person, I mean, someone who, uh, dropped out of high school, she got involved, um, in the human trafficking, uh, sex trade, and, and it was just awful childhood, yet had the wherewithal to come out of it and identify her, you know, what had happened to her, and then to seek the proper, uh, help, and then now is helping others, she's written a book about it, and, you know, just amazing person. So I, I, I thank you for, you know, bringing her there and sharing that story. Um, the, so the Super Bowl, aren't they helping with this No Traffic Ahead, um, um?
The NFL.
You know, get out the, the, the word, um, effort?
So the No Traffic Ahead is, is an initiative out of the South Bay Coalition to End Human Trafficking. The, the NFL and, and the Super Bowl supports all efforts to, uh, change, uh, social dynamic, but they're, they're, they're not out front i- in, in this effort. They're not hindering by any means, but they're definitely not out front.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you know, and the Super Bowl is the biggest, uh, sporting event in the U.S., I guess the biggest event in the U.S., and so, uh, if not the world.
It's the biggest one-day event.
One-day event.
One-day event in the world.
Yeah, so, um, you know, using that event to shine the light on this, um, thing that sometimes people don't think it happens in the U.S., there's over a hundred thousand people who are, um, who are basically in slavery, and it isn't just human trafficking, but it's also work slavery as well, and I know that you're also, uh, addressing that issue, too. So, um, thank you so much, uh, Mike.
Thank you. As I said, it, 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 uh, it's, change starts with leadership, and, and I want to, again, congratulate you for being one of fifteen in San Mateo County to actually stand up and call this of value, and, and call this something that we need to educate ourselves so that tomorrow's a better day.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, so.
So I would move, uh, adoption of Resolution Twenty Fifteen Forty-six as modified?
I, I.
Second.
I personally would. Yeah. I, I personally would like to ask a question of, of, actually, of Chief Macias. Have we had issues of human trafficking here in Brisbane?
No, we have not. Doesn't mean it's not occurring, it's just we haven't had any, any issues. There is a task force that, that's run through the county, um, that goes around in different, to different cities, um, looking for those kinds of, um, you know, human trafficking issues or, or others, and so we will begin our involvement and participating in those task forces as well, and, and so that they can come as well and, and check out our hotels.
Great. Um, I, I think that it's good for the public to all know, you know, that the situation exists, but, and to keep your eyes open and let things know if there's an issue that you see, but I also didn't want to, eh, and give the impression that we have a known problem here in Brisbane with human trafficking, and, and to refer to massage ordinances or massage establishment as that sort of business gives it the impression that because a business is a legitimate massage establishment, that it's that sort of business, and I sort of take mild offense to that, because not all certified massage therapists are involved in sex trade or illegal activities. So, anyway, um, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have a motion and a second.
In a second.
Ready to vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So I would like to take a break so that we can move on. We're almost through the consent calendar, and we still have new business and many other things, and I would like to take a five-minute break before we move on.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.